Palermo. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Here, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the opening remarks.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few comments about the change of season now that the fall has started is as warm as it's been and as rainy as it's been. It will eventually get cooler and the leaves will change and it's just a time of year I think is enjoyable where people end up going to pumpkin patches and doing all that fun sort of thing. And one of my favorite days of the year is Halloween when the little kids come to our door and it seems like, you know, they're all excited and you hand out candy. So, just as we reflect in the change of the season and in the fall to come, I look forward and hope you do with optimism and take in stock of maybe some goals that you want to accomplish in the third quarter, fourth quarter of the year. That's it. Let's have a good meeting.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the East 12 legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of the people's business, though, we ask that you turn off or silence any cell phones. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to establish a sister-city friendship agreement with Yzini, France.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Welcome.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, members. I'm Andy Schilling. I'm with the Omaha Sister Cities Association. I'm the vice president. I'm also with the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce. I do international development there. Sister Cities is a noble enterprise and we already have six sister cities for Omaha. Those are Brownshyg, Germany, Shizuoka, Japan, which will have its 55th anniversary next year, Shilay, Lithuania, Nice, Ireland, Chalapa, Mexico, and also Yan Tai, China. The proposal before you is to endorse the signing of a friendship agreement leading toward a seventh sister city. And that sister city, it's Yzini, Omaha, and what we are proposing is a partnership between Omaha, Nebraska and Omaha Beach in France. I've been a member of a delegation where we've explored this partnership. We're excited, not just because of the historic iconic ties, but because of future possibilities of student exchanges, internships, cultural exchanges, and even business partnerships and propositions. So, I thank you for this opportunity. We are very excited. We would like to have a friendship signing with the mayor leading our delegation in October.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Come on out.
Bonjour. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Esther Braebeck and I'm a member of the Alliance Française d'Omaha, the French Alliance of Omaha. There are over 182 French alliances around the world. We have 300 members in Omaha and we have been in existence for 102 years. 1917 was when the Alliance Française d'Omaha was established. So, I was part of the delegation that welcomed the French from Normandy, from Yzini, Omaha intercom in March when they came and got to go over in April and see them. And I think it'll be a very wonderful friendship between the two areas. They were extremely grateful for everything we did 75 years ago on Omaha Beach. And so, it'll be a very special relationship. So, thank you for considering the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ambassador Festerson.
I got promoted today. That's great.
Well, you went on the most recent Sister Cities recognition trip.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to say thank you, Andy and Esther, and all of you for being down here today and for the work of the Omaha Sister Cities Association. I think it is very valuable work as we continue to make friendships with other cities across the world and share our culture and our government and our passions with them. And this one in particular, I think, as we expand to seven, is special given the powerful ties there from World War II and Omaha Beach and Normandy that exist with the city of Omaha. So, I look forward to seeing this occur. And you mentioned student exchanges. I know there's also a group of Central students that are going there this summer. They're tying into your work too that do study World War II and all those relationships. So, I think that's one of the great benefits too for our kids. So, with that, I'll motion to approve.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution remembering the 100th year of the unlawful lynching of Mr. William Brown.
Before we call the public hearing on this item, we've been asked, or I've been requested for by council member Gray to actually read this resolution. And in light of its significance, without objection, it will be so allowed.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many people know or have heard about, it is, on September 28, 1919, was a very dark day in our city in which a gentleman by the name of Will Brown was lynched, burned, shot, and beaten to death by a white mob. And this coming Saturday morning at nine o'clock will be the reflection and commemoration of that effort. And I wanted to take the opportunity because this has been an effort that has been going on for about a year with a group of people coming together, being led by Vicki Young, who's the president of the NAACP. And I wanted to thank her and I wanted to thank Ms. Counsel, Brenda Counsel. And with us in the chamber too is the Douglas County Chairman, Chris Rogers, who worked on this as well. So, I would like to thank them as well as our staff, specifically Liz Bercoletti, for doing this, quite a bit of the work on this resolution that I'm about to read. But it is a reflection of what has occurred and it is also a reminder that the work is not done and we still continue to work and can have to work. And so, with that, I will read the resolution as written. And we have some people in the audience who I think would also probably want to make some comments as well. But I'll start with the resolution as resolved by the city council of the city of Omaha. Whereas on September 28, 1919, an African-American laborer named Mr. William Will Brown was lynched by a lawless white mob near the steps of the Douglas County Courthouse at 18th and Harney Streets preceding a day of race riots that came to be known as the Omaha Race Riot of 1919. And whereas, not content with his death by lynching, members of the riotous mob tied Mr. Brown's lifeless body to the rear of an automobile and dragged him around downtown Omaha, ending at the intersection of 17th and Dodd Streets where they burned his corpse on a public pride. And whereas, of the 120 people indicted for their involvement in the riot and murder, most were never prosecuted and all were eventually released after serving no time in prison. And whereas, the lynching of Mr. Brown followed a nationwide wave of growing racial and hateful domestic violence and terrorism termed the Red Summer of 1919, where more than 150 people, the majority of whom were black, were killed by lawless vigilante mobs. And whereas, his lynching also came amid a local political struggle for control of City Hall by a well-known crime boss, Tom Dennison, who used the yellow journalism in local news media conflated racial tension, stoked by white resentment, and painted a portrait of an inept administration and police force. And whereas, Mr. Brown's body rests in an unmarked grave in the Potter's Field Cemetery in Omaha until 2009, when a man from Riverside, California, named Chris Herbert paid for a memorial marker engraved with his name, date, and cause of death and the words "Lest We Forget." And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and the city council of the city of Omaha that recognition be given of the racially motivated and unlawful lynching of Mr. William Brown by a lawless white mob on the doorsteps of the Douglas County Courthouse on September 28, 1919. The Douglas County Board and the Omaha City Council express great remorse to extended and surviving family members of Mr. William Brown, Omaha's African-American community, and the public at large. Lest we forget that Omaha was not immune to the violent racial criminal actions that accompanied the great migration of black migrant workers northward. And furthermore, be it resolved that these bodies recommit to eradicating racist acts and sense of privilege that remain today and led Mr. Brown's lynching 100 years ago. Douglas County Board and Omaha City Council are committed to enacting public policies that will reduce racial disparities and inequities in our community and dismantle the structural inequity unearthed by our jurisdictions of local government. That reads our resolution. And I know we have several people who would like to speak to that today. And I yield a full or right now to our president of the NAACP, Ms. Vicki Young, one of those who's worked most diligently on this resolution and this day of atonement for the city of Omaha.
The public hearing begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Again, Vicki Young, president of the Omaha branch of the NAACP, 2221 North 24th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I want to take the opportunity to, not just on behalf of the Omaha NAACP and the Omaha Community Council for racial justice and reconciliation to thank the Douglas County... Who are you guys? Thank you. City Council. City Council. I know who you are. City Council. For recognizing this dark history, this black eye that's on the city of Omaha. Today and moving forward is a pivoting time in which we need to look at policies, as Mr. Gray stated, and what we're going to do to make the plane feel even for everyone, for the citizens of Omaha. And so, I would be remiss if I did not recognize Reverend John Albert Williams. He was the first president of the Omaha NAACP. He was there some 100 years ago, fighting for the life of the then-mayor and the life of Mr. Will Brown. And so, I would be remiss if we did not take the opportunity to recognize him and his efforts. I also want to take the opportunity to recognize Juneteenth, Nebraska. I believe representatives are here today. They, for the past 10 years, have held the Mayonnaise during Juneteenth, where there, at the courthouse stairs, we have a prayer vigil. And we pray and we ask for forgiveness for the horrific act that took place just outside these walls. And so, again, we look forward to seeing everyone Saturday at the Douglas County Courthouse, 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the city council, I want to thank you all for putting the resolution on today. I want to also thank my fellow board members this morning on the county board for their approval. In addition to the people here that are sitting, you know, there's a lot of your own. We want to thank Franklin Thompson and the work that's been done over the last year. Liz was mentioned, but two people I forgot to mention specifically in regards to the resolution, Dr. Chris Witt at Creighton University and also Barry Thomas at OPS, who did some fine tuning and tweaks from Liz's base. And we kind of sat down and made that work. The only thing I'd like to add is, you know, this is whole year in setting up for this moment. It's just interesting in understanding some of the details of this history. And I don't think it's by chance that this resolution comes and a lot of the stories, information from this year, from the New York Times, this 1619 project from slavery, this 100-year of Red Summer, to even the Dirk Cheatham book of 24th and Glory. And I think, you know, I would encourage everybody hearing and watching today to read those pieces. And I think it's a line that takes us from, you know, slavery to lynching to civil rights to giving us a blueprint of locally where some of those inequities are and where we can get to trying to make some corrections. So, with that, I want to thank you all for your support and encourage everybody past Saturday and the pivot point and the opportunities that it presents us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Public hearing is closed. We'll recognize briefly the director of the Human Rights and Relations Department, Dr. Franklin Thompson.
Franklin Thompson, 1819 Farnham, room 502. And...
Gerald Kuhn, Assistant Director of Human Rights and Relations.
We want to thank not only the council for what you're doing today, but we want to thank Omaha. This is an opportunity to do something that isn't done enough, and that is to have reconciliation. Reconciliation is hard to do because a lot of people want to just put it away and forget. But I like to say that the physical forms of racism is not the only form that we have to deal with. We also have to deal with the psychological aspects and the impacts. And this thing that we're doing today and Saturday is a way to heal on the inside. And I think there are people here that understand what I'm saying more than others, but we need to trust one another and this is something that has to happen. And I thank the leadership of the council for taking it up and doing it. Thank you very much. And again, this is not rehashing the old, it's the beginning of a new. And I believe the beginning of the new will be seeing us as Americans in a brand-new way that we haven't quite seen yet. Thank you very much. Did you want to say anything, Gerald?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you.
And if I might, this morning, the county board, the county board of commissioners took a picture of all the council members and those who were involved out front here. And if it's okay with you, I'd like for us to take a picture as well.
That'll be fine, but we're going to first go through council member comments.
Okay.
Council member Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to, in addition to the county board and this body, I'd like to thank the building commission for all their help in arranging for the event on Saturday and hope all can attend. I also wanted to bring up a point. Actually, a constituent contacted me and made me aware of the National Memorial for Peace and Justice in Montgomery, Alabama. And there is, in that display, there's a series of columns. And it represents and has the names of all the counties and those who were lynched in those counties, which is obviously too many. But they have available replica columns. And I sent a message to Chris Rogers. There you are, Chris. I'm sorry, I lost you there. And was told that we are in fact working on getting one of those replica columns and we'll make sure that there's an appropriate place for that to be displayed and viewed by all through the building commission. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Harding. Council member Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would also just add my thanks to the committee and NAACP and council members and county board members that worked on this too. And speaking of Central High School, as I'm prone to do, I was encouraged this week when I went through their open house to learn that their history classes were teaching this event to all students at the high school. And I'm sure many other schools are doing the same thing. I just wanted to comment that I think that's so important, that we can't forget that this did happen in our city and make sure that those that come after us are aware of that, aware of that history and are participating in this week's events. I intend to bring my kids on Saturday to see the remarks and the commemoration and I encourage others to do that too. I know Mr. Thompson has actively taught his students the history behind this as well. So, I just think that's an important point to make as we look to the future here in Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Gray.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I just wanted to add a few comments that I made this morning at the county board meeting. And that is, you know, we can take this commemoration or this reflection and we can spend the day thinking about it, talking about it, reading about it, and a number of other things. But if we don't begin to do the work to change our behavior and if we don't begin to work to make this community better and make this city, state, and nation better than it appears to be right now, then we've done really nothing. We've got to not only remember these kinds of circumstances, but we have to learn from these circumstances so that we don't make the same mistakes again. This ought to be a reconciliation, as Dr. Thompson talked about. But it also needs to be a reflection that we, when we get up every morning, we have to think about how we address injustice every single day, every single day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I noticed a member of the community had approached the dais to speak but may have not heard the public hearing close. You took a lot of time and effort to come here today. Did you want to say something? Okay. I just wanted to give you that opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, at this time, council member Gray suggested a photo. I'd invite members of the community to come down. Who spoke? You want to vote first? All right. We'll vote first. Is there a motion and a second?
We got it. Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero.
All right. Well, I was notified by the clerk, we did not actually have a formal call for opponents to the last items. So, I'll, without objection, open the public hearing on item seven for opponents.
Well, I would like to protest that it's not a public hearing if you don't hear both sides.
I'm giving you the opportunity right now.
All right. Thank you.
I might start off. My name is Larry Store, 515 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I'm sorry, I start off a little bit negative, but I want to end with a positive, like I did this morning. I will not repeat everything. But we just heard you take a pledge to the allegiance to a republic. And every one of you have sworn to the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution takes precedence in all laws. So, I'd like to protest the wording of the resolution and ask you to revise it before you vote on it. There are a number of reasons. One is that it does more than just remember. Now, the agenda says it's to remember, but when you read the resolution yourself, it does more than that. And I think it really goes around the U.S. Constitution. I won't read that whole thing to you. But please, re-study the wording of it and apply the U.S. Constitution because I think possibly it is unconstitutional. Because you're already convicting not only yourselves, but past state and local governments, people, of perpetuating what you're calling is racism. Now, my father told me a story that when he was about seven years old, his father drove him up here from Glenwood in a wagon. And they abhorred what happened. My father was a railroader. He worked with a lot of various races and he supervised a lot of various races. He was not a racist. He took me on Saturday mornings up to the local bars or restaurants and we'd stop and visit with some Mexicans and some black people friends. But there are certain things that we are opposed to that other people want to call being racist. Now, history needs to be remembered. Because the 1619 project was brought up, I'd like to point out quickly two things in history. We were not a nation in 1619. It was not formed in 1619. The slave that landed in that date was brought from Africa, by Africans, and by probably Portuguese, maybe English, but not us. Wasn't me, wasn't my forebears. We didn't start that. Actually, slavery started way back when. Egypt's before very much of the world was populated, probably.
I need you to wrap up.
The other fact in history is, and I'd like you all to consult Chris Ann Hall's book at chrisannhall.com, on the heroes, the black heroes of history. Let's build some of that into this discourse. The black heroes of the revolution that founded our republic, that died at Concord and Bunker Hill, et cetera. So, to sum up, I just want to say that I think national organizations and agendas, maybe even international, are using an agenda. But they're also, I'm afraid, using the black people of Omaha and convincing them that we're still guilty of all this and that we did it. We didn't. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Will we close the public hearing? Mr. Harding.
I can't let that go. Mr. Store, please come up. I have a few questions for you.
Yes.
Name an address, sir, for the record.
I'm sorry?
You have to say your name and address again.
Larry. Larry Store. Did you not hear it?
No, it's just...
No, you have to repeat it when you come up.
You have to repeat it so that the record, when it's transcribed, will reflect who's...
Okay. S-T-O-R-E-R.
You've accused this body of violating the Constitution of the United States. Specifically, you accuse this body of violating the Constitution of the United States.
I think I said that the...
Hold on.
I think I said the wording of that resolution.
Okay. So, my question to you is, what specifically have we violated in the Constitution of the United States that you lay that accusation?
Well, we'd have to debate the sentences, wouldn't we, and the words?
Well, you come up and make general terms and make accusations based on general terms.
You're proclaiming that you're going to rewrite...
Mr. Store, I'm the one asking the question. If you're claiming that this body has somehow violated the Constitution, then I suggest that you file a claim in federal court against this body. You can't just come up here and make accusations that are baseless. And on top of it, all this resolution is doing is recognizing an event that happened in the past and the horrible circumstances that occurred with that event. And what we're doing is trying to make that a learning and teaching moment for today and for our kids and for what happened in the past.
And I don't...
I'm still speaking, Mr. Store. You know, you come up here every week and make accusations. And quite... and quite frankly, I'm getting sick and tired of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You can go on, yeah, go ahead, but I'm going to keep talking.
I don't think a citizen needs to be put through that. Consult your book over there on the wall.
Mr. Store, there's no question-
Go ahead and sit down.
Mr. Store, there's no question pending. You're out of order.
Anyway, I was also going to bring up the point. It's akin to if we were passing a resolution on the Holocaust. I mean, there are, it's, what we're trying to do here is make a statement. We're not laying blame as to someone's relatives who did this. We're making, we're making a point out of an event that happened in our city and events that happened across the nation. And it's, it's a, it's a simple gesture, but as Councilman Brown said, I did that last week, Ben, I'm sorry.
Will Brown.
Will Brown. As Councilman Gray has pointed out, this is, you know what, there's, this is nothing more than making us think and making us be better people to each other. That's it. That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Harding. One of the beauties of our democracy is, is the power of the people to come and speak, but it doesn't guarantee an informed speaker. And it doesn't necessarily mean that facts are spoken by those who may or may not be informed. And it doesn't mean that the, that the process is any, in any means diminished for it. It just reminds us all to keep, when we hear these things, ever-present in our mind that just because someone says something does not make it true, does not make it right, does not make it informed. Dr. Thompson, you wish to be recognized?
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Just three things that bother me with that particular statement that was made. Number one, I don't think the wording says the word racism in it. If it does, it's not pointed at any one particular person or group. Racism is a systemic thing that happens all over the globe, so if people in America are hyper about that, maybe it's because there's some guilt there that, that you're dealing with. But this is a regular human thing that happens in every country, and every country needs to deal with it. Number two, there was a statement made about sixteen nineteen. I'd like the crowd and the television audience to know, we're talking about nineteen nineteen. We're talking about an incident that happened in nineteen nineteen, and the people who did bring slaves over still have relatives in America today. I'd also like to say that sometimes education is very thin, and it doesn't tell the truth. And one of the things that, that I know is confusing for people is the difference between old-world slavery and chattel slavery. The two are day and night. They're not even the same. So when you compare old-world slavery, and in old-world slavery, you could actually buy your freedom and marry into the families of the people who enslaved you. That was old-world slavery, as in Egypt. Chattel slavery, not only could you not buy your freedom, you, your kids, your kids' kids, your kids' kids', kids', everybody was forever damned for all eternity. And in chattel slavery, they also said that somehow God had blessed that. Now, if someone wants to get to the microphone and say that those two things are the same thing, I'd have to say that they need some serious re-education. So once again, we have to make sure that we're accurate in what we're saying and that we've done our homework.
Shakespeare once said something like, "Thou dost protest too much, methinks." Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item eight, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Blue Stem Meadows, located northwest of 180th and Blondo Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Thank you.
Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Pacific Grove with a waiver to Section 53, Date 4A, About Depth, located at 1018 South and 90th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B's Communications and Opposition.
Public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant.
They'll turn that on for you, Kyle.
The property in question is highlighted here on the exhibit. It is currently zoned R2. The current zoning to the west, north, and east of this property is R2 as well. To the south of the property, on the northwest corner of 90th and Pacific, that currently has an R4 zoning and has multifamily units on that lot. Previously, as you can see, there is a home shown in this aerial. That house had previously been vacant on the lot and had been in that state for eight years. In that eight years of being vacant, it was going into disrepair and had been broken into and vandalized many times. At this point in time, that home has been demolished. We are requesting rezoning for this lot from R2 to an R4 PUR. This project involves the plating of seven single-family lots, as shown on this exhibit. Along with the seven single-family lots, there are two additional outlots. Those two outlots include the private drive that goes on the north property, down the middle, and then back out to the south. The second outlot is the water quality basin that is on the east property line along 90th Street. This is a colored exhibit showing the proposed plan. The private drive, as mentioned earlier in the outlot, this is a one-way drive. There'll be ingress on the north side and egress to the south, and then one-way through the center of the project as well. This private drive is tree-lined and involves decorative pavers on both the north and south ends of the, of the drive. It also includes a community gathering space within the development centralized. This provides a nice gathering space for the neighbors, and I believe these elements help create a nice courtyard feel to the center of this community. There is the water quality basin that is on the east property line. This water quality basin provides a nice buffer between the homes and 90th Street, allows for additional landscaping, and then there is also a seventy-foot setback from the curb of 90th Street to the back of those homes as well. Along with that additional landscaping, there is a proposed brick and metal fence that will run along that back property line of those homes on the east side. This fence follows the field that is at Pacific Spring Greens up the street, so it provides a nice continuity throughout the neighborhood and what is existing there as well. Another benefit that will have, that will be part of this development is the walk that is along 90th Street. As you can see from this photo, there's a small four-foot walk. It is pretty much curb-adjacent. This plan will provide an eight-foot buffer between back of curb and, curb and walk, and then also provide a seven-foot walk, provide more space, and just a better safe feel when walking along the street. And it provides kind of a standard of what developments in the future will need to follow as well. Proposed homes for this project is three thousand square foot homes. They are two-story single-family with a basement. The value of these homes range between six hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars, based on amenities and materials decided upon by the owners. As you can see here, this is an elevation of the, of the homes. As you can see, they are very attractive-looking homes. They're trying to meet certain markets. They have the opportunity to provide elevators within the homes as well, to try and meet the, the senior market that might be lacking in this area of town. There has been a total of five meetings with the neighbors held over the last thirteen months. Two of these meetings were with Spencer and Elizabeth Murphy, Murphy, by themselves. They are the property owners to the north. Those meetings were held on August 14th of 2018, and then this September 19th. There were additional three meetings with the neighbors as a whole. Those neighbors and meetings were held at Sorensen Library on the corner, corner of 90th and Dodge. Two of the main concerns that were, came out of these meetings were grading and screening on the project. We completed a pre and post-development drainage study that concluded that there was not going to be any additional volume of drainage leaving the site except to the east, and that additional drainage to the east will then be collected and treated before leaving the site. To address the concerns of grading, the developer entered into a pre-development contract with Land Hawn Nursery to provide the landscape, as shown here on the project. There's extensive landscaping along the west boundary line. Along the south, there is also a variety of shrubs planted to screen the property to the south, and there is internal landscaping as well, and then landscaping along 90th Street around the water retention basin as well. In addition to that, that landscaping will be HOA-maintained, and so it'll be well-maintained and not be a concern or a responsibility of those homeowners. In addition, there was also an agreement with Spencer and Elizabeth Murphy to the north to provide a landscape allowance for their yard. This includes the landscape plan as shown here. We provided a bid from Land Hawn Nursery for, to provide seven trees along this property line. In addition, yeah?
Number seven in Exhibit B.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
And nine tall evergreen shrubs. This bid from Land Hawn Nursery came to a total of $5,740. The developer will then, then added an additional $2,260 for the Murphys to plant additional plants as they desire. This brought the total allowance to $8,000. The Murphys have agreed to this allowance amount. As part of the agreement with the developer, developer, we have also changed the shrubs on this north property line. They will be tall evergreen shrubs, ranging in height between eight and 12 feet, to provide additional screening along that north property line as well. In addition, there is also a screen, six-foot screen fence that will wrap the property to the northwest and to the south. On the south property line, the screen, the six-foot screen fence goes to the east edge of the private drive. It runs the entirety of the west property line, and then to the north, it runs to the front of the Murphys residence. Overall, I believe this, this is a great project for the city of Omaha and follows their goals and overall vision for infill development, and I'll make myself available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the development team and the neighbors for working through some of the issues that, that occurred along the way as this development has been proposed. From the initial concept to what we have at the end of the day, I think is, would be a good development for the city of Omaha. I thank Mr. Murphy, who I've had a number of conversations with as well, and it was recently, it was today, and I apologize, I wasn't at pre-councilor day to talk about this, but it appears that, that we have a resolution here that's, that's acceptable to all parties. So with that, I will move for approval.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Items 10 to 12 can be considered together for South Hill Edition, located at 1301 South 12th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and an R7 district. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat for South Hill Edition. Item 12, a resolution to approve the South Hill Edition subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 10 through 12 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Tom McClay, 3814 Farnham Street, Suite 201, on behalf of the applicant. This has been in front of the council a few times now. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Welcome, Mr. Greco.
Well, Nino Greco, 4673 Pacific Street. I'm also, was the estate manager for 1319 South 12th Street, and now because of the probate process, I am now the owner of that said property. I just wish there would have been a little more information from the developer to the neighborhood owners. What was going on here? I've got one letter addressed to my deceased mother, and that's all I have, but I just, you know, I'd just like to know more about the project. I've said my piece and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. Mr. McClay, I'm sure will reach out to you if you stick around in the, in the bridge outside the, the room and would just let you know, too, that there was a neighborhood meeting as a part of the process, and I regret that, that that was not something that you saw or were able to participate in. But he will meet with you afterwards, I'm sure. Are there any other opponents? Public, I don't want to miss another opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 12 are approved, seven to zero. Items 13 to 19 can be considered together for Antler View East, located southwest of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 13 to 15 are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District and R4 District to DR District, R4 District and MEU District. Item 16, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement for Antler View East. Item 17, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Antler View East. Item 18, a resolution to approve the final plat for Antler View East. And item 19, a resolution to approve the Antler View East subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 13 through 19 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
13 through 19 are approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a class A liquor license for Mr. Butts Wines and Spirits, located at 5611 South 36th Street.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kevin Tward, 5849 South 50th Street, or 48th Street.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions?
Yeah.
Including how you came up with the name.
I actually have Mr. Butts. It's called Wine and Spirits. It's actually going to be across the street. I have a store right now that's actually called Mr. Butts Tobacco and Snacks. So I've been there for 16 years, and I'm kind of extending my business over because I'm running out of room.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, Phil, you could, you started to, to go on about the business across the street. Tell us what's going to be unique, because I believe you used to have this as a bar.
I'm going to do high-end wines and spirits. It's kind of like almost a gathering together. I probably want to have TVs in there. I'm going to be doing like, you guys want to get together, come out in the back patio and, and have a good time. I mean, I'm not going to have like, be open probably till 2:00. It's probably going to be 10:00 or 12:00. And I'm getting too old to be in the bar business. So, but I want something to everybody to gather together and have like, say, there are certain liquors that you guys always see, and you're like, oh, I want to try this, but it's $50 a bottle. see, and you're like, oh, I want to try this, but it's $50 a bottle. Well, you can try it here. Take it off the shelf, and we can try it for you, and, you know, work it together. So.
Okay, thank you.
I've been in the business for, liquor business for 20 years.
Okay. Councilmember Pauls.
Little Pauls, is that, that is the actual?
The original. Yeah, I own the corporation.
Okay. I haven't been in that place, as I can recall, enough years ago. That was one of the cleanest little spots in town.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm taking the building back over. I was renting it out to the Crossbones, and they pretty much decided to get out, and I'm like, well, you know, this is an opportunity now to just get back into it and kind of put the bridge together. I'm actually getting the building painted the same color as across the street right now.
Okay. Now, and I'm just curious, does this make me think, across the street, was that a grocery store at one time?
I heard it was an old upholstery shop at one time when I first took it over, but I heard it was an ice cream shop. I heard it was a restaurant. It was a drugstore. So it's been something, I've been there since 2003. And I bought this building in 2001.
Okay, this is a little bit before that time.
Yeah.
Best of luck to you. Thank you.
But it's going to be different in there, so you'll have to come in, because I'm putting ceramic, porcelain tile, I'm putting chandeliers in there, I'm making it elegant, so it's going to be really, yeah, really nice.
After I go to church in the corner, I just walk down?
Exactly.
Most of the people.
That'd be Peter and Paul versus.
Exactly. I support them every year.
Just want to make, get my bearings. Okay. Is there a motion, a second? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Harding.
Melton.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Item 21, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Drybar Omaha located at 10203 Regency Circle, Suite 100.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Oh, thank you. Good afternoon. Julia Plucker, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here representing Drybar Omaha. One of the owners, Sarah Cole, is with me as well. It is to be located in the Regency area. We're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls. Thank you, Mr. President.
I just, Drybar, a little bit more information.
Yes. Say your name and address. Sarah Cole, my personal, 16705 Ontario Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. So basically, we're a hair salon. It's a franchise, and there's like 140 locations across the country, and all we do is we shampoo and style hair, so that's like our main focus. And so what we're trying to do is, we're big on like the client experience, so we are just looking to offer like one complimentary like beverage, like a glass of champagne or white wine. We'll also have like water, coffee, tea, that kind of thing, too, so.
So in other words, if I don't like my hair, I get another shot?
Um, yes.
I just thought it was an interesting name, but you say this is a franchise?
Yes.
Drybar.
Yes, so we're the first location in Nebraska, so.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Hair being a requisite element of why.
Hey, you've got a good head of hair over there.
Councilmember Harding.
You guys are taking all my material.
Yes.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
I was going to ask you to, this is actually when I first heard of the concept.
Right.
It was amazing when the number of other cities that have it, but also the number of cities that don't yet have it, and Omaha is going to have it before a lot of those cities, and.
Right.
I was going to ask you, too, to explain kind of what it was, but there are a couple of us, maybe, who could use the services.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe a couple that wouldn't, but.
Men's ball.
I might need to.
Anyway, I want to wish you good luck in the location.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yes, come on in.
Please use your services. Look forward to it.
Yeah, we'd love to have you. Yes.
Councilmember Pauls moved. Is there a second? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 22 through 37 were held September 17, 2019. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Harding.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 38 through 49 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
My name is Ross Coyle. I'm the owner of The Broke Down Palace, address 1114 Jones Street, apartment 10, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Public hearing is closed. We have a light by Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ross, thanks for coming down. If you wouldn't mind, I'm glad you're here. On number 38, I think we recently did just move these to consent agenda, which is fine, but I just wasn't very familiar with this particular request or this site. If you could just tell me a little bit more about the event and what you hope to do.
Sure. Yeah, so we are in the Old O'Neals, which was Dave's pub, next to Homestyle Cafe on 88th and Maple, to kind of give you an idea of where we are.
Okay. Is that north or south side of it?
It's going to be on the south side. There's a, it's attached, there's three bays, so there's a laundromat, then the cafe, and then our place is going to be on the furthest bay to the south. Behind our patio there is a little cove, so we have already done an outdoor concert the first weekend in May called Run for the Roses. It tied in with the Kentucky Derby. So we did 20 bands over two days. Those shows ended at 11:00 PM. We did not have any complaints from the neighbors. The way it's set up back there, you have a natural sound barrier with a hill that runs up to the south side, so I would say it's at least 40 to 50 feet. Behind that is residential. There's one main landowner named Bill Martins. We already have his signature for approval or permission. And then everything else, the way it's set up, the sound will go to the north, and all of that is commercial property even past 90th Street, or Maple Street, I should say.
Okay, that helps. The only difference is you're going to midnight with this request.
We would like to, yeah.
And no complaints or any problems from the first?
No, we had, we had police show up early in the night, so we ran from 5:00 till 11:00. We did have the beer guard open until 1:30, but live music ended at 11:00. The police came early, about 6:00. Just wanted to make sure we had all our paperwork in order, and no, yeah, no problems from our previous event, so.
Yeah, I didn't receive any complaints either, but I appreciate you giving me the room there and helping come check it out.
Yeah, we'll let you in for free, I promise.
No, I'll take my way.
He didn't tell you he has a band, Glenn Hollow.
Well, let's get your book.
Councilmember Pauls.
President, am I to understand the cafe will still stay there?
Yeah, so this is just an outdoor event, and we're actually partnering up with, the cafe is going to do food for us as well. We want to try to involve our neighbors in any way that we could, so they're going to provide all the food for the event, and they'll take all the money from that, so.
Well, that's good. For those of you who haven't been there, it's just one of those, what I call good little greasy spoons.
It's the best chicken fried steak in town. And she's under previous, she bought her place about the same time I did. There was previous owners there for about 25 years. We've done a lot to really try to improve that area, and I feel pretty proud about it, to be honest, so.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Harding.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 50, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 19, Article 16, entitled Restaurant and Drinking Places Occupational Privilege Tax is amendment of the whole requested by Councilmember Harding.
And just for the council members, I view the amendment as a whole as a friendly amendment, improves it, clarifies it. Mr. Harding, you wish to explain?
Sure. Again, I apologize for not being here pre-council, but as we discussed last week, I thought it was, just by striking the language, if we were silent to it, I thought it would be better off if we had an affirmative statement in there to use that if necessary. I think I made some comments last week about putting some time limits or dates on that, number of days being delinquent, but after further discussion with the law department, I think it made more sense not to include that, the number of days, so that's why it's a little contrary to maybe what I brought up last week. But in the spirit of the ordinance and what you just said, Mr. President, I'd request that the amendment of the whole be supported, and I'll make that motion.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 50 amended in the whole is approved, seven to zero. Item 51, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 34, Article 6, Division 3, entitled Removal of Obstructions and Accumulations by Requiring the Public Works Department to Annually Establish the Fee for Department Personnel to Clear Ice and Snow Accumulations.
Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and I don't want to labor this. I think we've struggled with this since probably beginning of February, maybe beginning of January when we first started to get people coming in to the Board of EAK who had just exorbitant fees assessed to their properties for feeling to shovel their sidewalks. Individual people had anywhere from $700 to $1,100 for small families with really not very big homes either. And I know we all struggled with having to impose those assessments because that's what our job is at the Board of Equalization. So I really worked with law. I know I've sent this around to all of you weeks ago for input. This wasn't something I just threw on at the last minute. I understand there's a little pushback from Public Works, but I think the fact that we were doing this, even though this hasn't passed, has actually worked. So I want to thank Mr. Kleffner and Director Stube for going out this year and really attempting to find more bidders so that we aren't placed with just whoever happens to see the bid, we get two bids, and then they come in extraordinarily high, like what we had last year. So from what I heard this morning, we have some more reasonable bids. Public Works tells us that they're going to review those, and the low bid, they're going to be reviewing it, and the low bidder may or may not have all the qualifications, but I'm really hoping they give everybody a fair shot here and that the public is not going to pay an extraordinary amount. Now, I also have fines in here, so this isn't, it's kind of a two-way street. I want everybody in the, I want all the citizens of Omaha to do what they're supposed to do. Shovel your walk within 24 hours of the snow ending. For those people who can't, who get caught by a heart attack, or in the hospital, they're sick, or, you know, they have renters and they thought the renters were doing it, I understand that there's things that happen, so I don't want people to use the city as their personal snow removal, but also if there is, if somebody does make a mistake, I want the, they always say I want the punishment to fit the crime, and I think in this particular case, our assessment, although that's what we paid, it didn't do that. And I always compare it to, you know, Jaywalking's illegal, but I don't think anyone should spend 30 days in jail for it. And that's a little bit what I thought we did this year. So I am asking for your support. I think that I did give the Public Works some leeway in how they can determine what it would cost to go out and do it either themselves or a market rate, and I'm asking that although they've done what we hoped that they would do this year, I'm passing this ordinance to make sure in future years, when I'm not here and none of you are here and we've forgotten about it, it doesn't happen. It doesn't, history doesn't repeat itself, really, is what I'm trying to do with this ordinance. So I am asking for your support on this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Councilmember Melton for her getting out in front of this. As we sat on the Board of EAK, it was very painful to see the fees that were being assessed to property owners, maybe knowing or not knowing, and I think just that conversation has, through the bid process, although it's not finalized, I think it has generated more than enough, hopefully, bid-wise to bring this down to where it should be. So working with Public Works, obviously, they have a part of this as well, where self-performing may be tough with the staffing limitations, or maybe it's just not in their budget, so I'm looking forward to a couple of these quotes coming through, and we'll be in a much better place this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. And as this evolved, my position in the Board of Equalization was, is that if you're not shoveling your sidewalk and the city's hiring people to shovel your walk for you, and essentially having the rest of the taxpayers of this city subsidize you, not performing what is expected of you and your responsibilities as either a renter or a landowner, then it's just not fair to us and our constituents that they should have to subsidize you. But recognizing that the process that Public Works had had kind of reached a point where they were waiting until late in the fall, going out to bid, getting a couple of, with all due respect, economic opportunists, charitably, some might say pirates, taking advantage of the situation on the other end of the spectrum, and coming up with rates, which for a relatively short amount of linear fee was over $1,000. It was nuts. So I'm glad that we have this solution that preserves the responsibility and maintains that on the property owner while at the same time it promoted a whole new process for going out and getting bids and for implementing that. So thank you for your efforts on this. Is there a motion, a second? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 51 is approved, seven to zero. One public hearing will be held for items 52 and 53, ordinances to amend the Omaha Municipal Code and to amend the future land use element of the Omaha Master Plan to
The public hearing on items 52 and 53 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to amend the Omaha Municipal Code to regulate the city's processing of applications for the deployment of small wireless facilities by telecommunications companies.
Before I open the public hearing on item 54, are there anyone from the Department, Planning Department, which is to be recognized?
PJ Butler, City of Omaha Planning Departments. My main role in this proposed ordinance was putting together the design guidelines as well as with my fellow colleagues. Just wanted to point out a few of our goals that we kept in mind as we were putting these guidelines together. Number one, we wanted to keep the equipment as minimal and non-intrusive as possible, also realizing that cellular data is very important to our citizens and our ability to function as a smart city. And lastly, realizing our obligation to comply with the recent legislation. Overall, I think we did a good job achieving these objectives.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, does the law department wish to say anything?
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. Mainly here to answer any questions, but as the council's aware, this has been prepared in order for the city to comply with recently passed legislation by the state legislature, LB 184, which is the Small Wireless Telecommunications Act. We don't really have a process in place for processing the applications, so we created a new chapter of the code, new chapter 56, so our zoning code will not no longer be the last chapter in our municipal code. Alan Tealyn actually started this process back with state legislature earlier this spring and prepared the majority of this ordinance, working with PJ Butler and the Public Works Department. I have been handling some comments and input from both the Verizon and AT&amp;T as to some questions and concerns, and we worked together to, I think, make some adjustments, which will be prepared in amendment to the whole that will be coming to you, was presented to you yesterday. It's available for review and will be in front of you next week. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Are there any proponents? For those used to Lincoln, we don't have neutrals, so we have proponents and opponents. You have to figure out a way to talk in between one of those. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
My name is Tim Hruza, last name H-R-U-Z-A. Address 530 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Appearing today in opposition to the ordinance on behalf of AT&amp;T. I appear in opposition today, knowing full well and completely thankful to Jennifer for agreeing to work with us and discuss the issue with us. We've sent feedback with her, and we've had a good discussion back and forth. I appear today for a couple of reasons. Simply want to express on behalf of AT&amp;T, we fully understand that we have not deployed any small cells yet in the city of Omaha. We plan to, we plan to do that at some point. We look forward to fostering our relationship with the city as we continue to do that. We very much appreciate Jennifer's work on this. She's been extremely responsive to some of the concerns expressed by our attorneys, and we look forward to working with her as well, knowing too, thankful for some of the changes that have been made to the ordinance that you have seen in the amendment. There are a couple of things that we would still like to continue to work with and to discuss. We're reaching out to Jennifer and hoping that we can do that through the city attorney's office on a couple of those specifics. And with that, I think I would also just reiterate to members of the city council that our goal in this back and forth that we've had with the city attorney's office and our goal moving forward would be to come to an agreement and an understanding where we can respect the state statutes that's been in place, the FCC order that's been issued, and foster a good working relationship with the city as this deployment takes place, not only in the city of Omaha, but across the state of Nebraska. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Miller, could I have you come down? Bill? Have I, have I?
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is William Miller, M-U-E-L-L-E-R, with Miller Rowback, 530 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you.
I have a question, Bill. Was this pretty contentious down in Lincoln, this legislation?
That is a gross understatement, yes. The bill was pending before the legislature for three sessions. It was quite acrimonious. The good news is, in this year of the session, there was an agreement reached through significant negotiation between the cellular companies, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and others, and primarily the League of Cities, League of Municipalities, City of Lincoln, City of Omaha.
I'm just curious, the City of Omaha probably, were they at sometimes at, on the other side of the issue with you?
Yes.
And that's, has been resolved for the most part?
It has been. It has been, and LB 184, as Jennifer referenced, is quite specific, quite detailed, as far as how you cite small cells, the authority of the city, does it include inside the right-of-way or outside the right-of-way? And these are some of the issues that we are working on. Insurance requirements is one of the issues that is still outstanding.
I know, being a resident of Lincoln, you want to make sure that city stays A1 class because of, doesn't get all junked up?
I agree.
Okay, okay.
People want better wireless service.
And a?
I've never heard any citizen say they wanted worse wireless service. We have, we have to embrace this technology.
Yeah, right. I agree.
5G's coming and.
Right. But do it with style.
Absolutely.
Okay. It was good to see you.
And there is, there is specific reference in the bill to historic areas, because that was an issue that the league brought forward, and that is addressed in the bill, that is addressed in the ordinance before you.
Okay. Again, it was good to see you. Enjoy.
It's good to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding.
Just a quick question for Jennifer, please.
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
Thanks. It's my understanding, and I think it was brought up, I think, in passing there, is that one of the issues is whether or not this applies to just the right-of-way or if it's more inclusive than just the right-of-way.
The Act applies to just the right-of-way and regulates how we are allowed to deploy or regulate installations in the right-of-way. The ordinance does broadly, more broadly, apply to public property as well, but the Act does not prevent us from regulating our own property and deployment of our own property. We're just trying to keep everything consistent.
All right. Okay, thank you.
And just one more thing to address the insurance requirements. We do have an insurance requirement in the ordinance. We have received input from both AT&amp;T and Verizon on that insurance provision. There was some kind of conflicting input from those two companies. I spoke with the General House councils for both companies last week, and they have agreed to work together to provide cohesive comments to us, so I may be making that tweak in the next week pursuant to their input.
Right.
Verizon is also here, and they have been really good to work with in their current deployments and are relatively supportive of our efforts here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance to acquire property located at 3403 Q Street for the construction of a new fire station 31.
Public hearing on agenda item 55 begins at this time. We welcome Chief Olson.
Thank you and good afternoon. Dan Olson, Omaha Fire Chief, 1560 Jackson Street. If you'd allow me a brief moment, opportunity just to read a very brief support statement, I'll be able to impress upon you my support for this project and hopefully answer any questions you might have. Honorable President and council members, I'm very excited to be here today to speak as a proponent to land purchase for Station 31. I wanted to start by thanking city government officials for all of the support that we've received on this project up to this point and beyond. Please let me advise you that a great deal of research went into the selecting the site for the new fire station build at 3404 Q Street. Much went into the selection of this location, and it is ultimately a site that will allow us to provide an all-encompassing coverage umbrella over the southeastern corridor of our city. Please understand that the site was recommended and is supported by the Omaha Fire Department's Station Optimization Project. OFD's optimization project utilized geographic information systems, GIS, and spatial allocation technology to help us identify areas in our city that are best suited for the relocation and/or new build sites for fire stations within our boundaries. This project highlighted criteria for fire and medical response variables such as travel times, types of calls, and area of coverage for each fire station. By assessing the variables, optimal locations for future fire stations have been identified. The methodology of the project highlighted geographic information, created a model of Omaha streets networks, street networks, excuse me, identified our current coverage areas and identified coverage gaps. The project highlighted areas for improvement, integrated MAPPA's population growth model into the network, and ultimately suggests that a site along the Q Street corridor be selected for the new Station 31 build site. 3404 Q Street is a site that will allow us to build a new double-deep apparatus bay fire station that is equipped with a minimum of 10 bedrooms. The fire station will be equipped with modern features that promote the health and wellness of our firefighters. Features such as an extractor washing machine, a dedicated and vented turnout gear room, and plume vent exhaust capturing systems will be equipped in the station. The station itself will be designed with efficiency in mind and will be built not only to stand the test of time by utilizing durable construction materials, but will also be built to honor the heritage of the old Station 31's design features. Please know that we are mindful of our community's interest in what will happen with the old Station 31 building. And although no decisions have been made as to the future of the structure, understand that the old Station 31 building is a staple of South Omaha, and we understand and support that there is interest in preserving its heritage. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Anderson, did you want to be recognized?
Thank you, President. Members of the council, Kevin Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office, here to offer our support, ask for your support of the project proceeding with purchase agreement for the site at 3404 Q Street will allow us to begin design of the facility in early 2020, with the idea and hope that we'll be able to break ground late in 2020 for a station to be opened in 2021. So that being said, I'll make myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I appreciate that. You pretty much answered every question I would have. I was thinking today of who would not be happy if we built a new fire station that was desperately needed in the southeast part of the city, and the only person I could think of was maybe the hardware store owner that sold buckets to us for every time it rained. But besides that, we know this building, the old building is historic. It served the residents, the citizens of this particular part of the city for a long, long time, but you and I both know this new building will be state-of-the-art. It will definitely, if we're gonna sit up here and talk about public safety as a kind of our number-one priority, this will definitely help along the lines with the men and women within the fire department. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also look forward to supporting this next week, and it is badly needed, and the new site is a good one. A couple of us attended the new West Precinct opening today for the police department. It's a really impressive facility, and it's gonna serve both the police and the community really well. I know this one will, too, so I look forward to attending that grand opening as well, I guess, in 2021. And I look forward also to working with you, Chief, on what I think is next in line, which is the station at 80th and Dodge for that upgrade, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed, as we did. Next item.
Non-action items, items 56 through 71, do not require public hearing or city council